...related to public hearings to order Tuesday, December 14th, 2021. Purpose of this meeting is to hold five public hearings, no earlier than 4:00 p.m. on five businesses for alleged violations. Brax Restaurant, Port Restaurant, Witchmere Harbor Functions, Lucky Labrador, Inc., DBA Perks, and Beach Light LLC Seal Pub. We are, we are holding these public hearings individually. We will open a public hearing and then close a public hearing and go on to the next one. The, the, these are related to, the Board of Selectmen assigned our town administrator as a hearing officer, and he held hearings on these already. Anyone that looked at the public packet on this today saw a whole lot of information in there. Transcripts, recommendations, and a memo from the town administrator, and all documents leading to where we are tonight. With that, I will open the first public hearing. Mary, would you read the public hearing notice?
Harwich Board of Selectmen's Notice of Hearing: Alleged Violations of Conditions of Liquor License, December 14th, 2021. The Board of Selectmen will hold a hearing on Tuesday, December 14th, 2021, at 4:00 p.m. for the purpose of consideration of alleged liquor license violations by Brax Restaurant Management, Inc., DBA Brax Landing, located at 705 Main Street, Harwich Port. The Board of Selectmen will consider possible penalty, penalties, including modification, suspension, revocation, or cancellation of said license. All members of the public having an interest in the topic are cordially invited to attend the public hearing, which will be held in the Griffin Room at the Harwich Town Hall, 732 Main Street, Harwich, Mass., 02645. Signed by the Board of Selectmen, the local licensing authority, and it was in the Cape Cod Times, November 30th, 2021.
Thank you, Mary. Public hearing is open. Joe, will you read your memo to the board?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon. Memorandum to the Board of Selectmen from Joseph F. Powers, Town Administrator, carbon copies to Megan Eldridge, Assistant Town Administrator, Jeffrey T. Blake, Esquire, KP Law, regarding Brax Restaurant Management, Incorporated, doing business as Brax Landing, 705 Main Street, public hearing on alleged violations of the annual all-alcoholic beverages license dated December 10, 2021. The Board of Selectmen as local licensing authority, L.L.A., for the town, received a memorandum from Chief David Gilmett of the Harwich Police Department on August 30th, 2021, see attached, outlining a violation alleged to have occurred on August 16th, 2021, at the licensed establishment known as Brax Landing, operating at 705 Main Street in Harwich Port. On September 7, 2021, the Board of Selectmen voted to remand the allegation to me, as town administrator, to conduct a show cause hearing for the purpose of determining whether there is cause for the L.L.A. to hold a hearing to determine whether the facts support a finding of allegations and to recommend to the L.L.A. any potential discipline if the facts so warrant. Based on the board's vote, a show cause hearing was convened on October 26th, 2021, at 1:00 p.m. in the Griffin Room at Harwich Town Hall. Please note, there were no representatives present at the hearing from the establishment. As such, the establishment has not presented any facts yet related to this matter. Allegations of violations: The town, acting through attorney Jeffrey T. Blake, presented witnesses and exhibits supporting the claim of violation, specifically that the establishment failed to prevent this consumption of alcoholic beverages purchased at the establishment outside of the licensed premises of the establishment. Findings and determinations: I find that the town provided sufficient evidence and testimony to confirm the allegation of violation and determine that the establishment did cause an illegality to occur, namely, consumption of alcoholic beverages outside of the licensed premises. Recommendations of discipline, if any? Whereas the licensed establishment does not, emphasis on "does not," have any violations on record with the town, having occurred within two years of this violation, this violation constitutes a first offense. The regulations of the L.L.A. outline a range of potential disciplinary actions, including, quote, "warning" to seven-day suspension, end quote, for a, quote, "first offense," end quote. I recommend that the L.L.A. issue a disciplinary action of "warning" to the licensed establishment.
Thank you, Joe. Is anyone here from the restaurant? If you have anything to say or want to join us before the board gets into deliberation, you're welcome to. We just ask that you step up to either the sitting mic or the standing mic and identify yourself for the record, please.
Jeffrey Gomes, owner of Brax Landing. On the night this occurred, we do have our signs up, which prevent people, try to prevent people. By the time we heard anything, by the time the police had arrived, there was nobody there, and I don't think anybody saw anybody with a drink, but, you know, we've done our best. We have put signs, we have somebody usually that goes out every 15 minutes to check, you know, but people want to go out, they want to see the boats, they want to walk around, but we do our best to keep them within, you know, the confined area. But we never saw the people, nobody could point them out afterwards, and no one saw, we never saw our drink go, so.
Thank you.
Any questions? Set?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Anyone else want to speak on this? Take a motion from a board member to close the public hearing?
Second.
Moved and seconded. We will do a roll call vote. Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Onto board deliberations, we have, you all have an extensive packet, I'm sure you've all read it. There's a recommendation for a disciplinary action of a warning. We, we have, I would say that, I can attest that Brax does a decent job at keeping people inside, and this is their, the, the first offense that I've seen on Brax. We can take the town administrator, hearing officer recommendation, or we can change it, modify it, and do what we wish. Open it up, conversation, Don?
I have nothing to say, I would be willing to make a motion.
Mary, anything to say?
Um, yeah, just a couple of things. I found it very disappointing. It was actually the assistant harbor master, people came inside to tell him there was a problem. He didn't even know. So he went out and spoke to whoever the, so he saw the people with drinks, told them to disperse, and people are so entitled nowadays, they don't think they have to do that. So I find that very disappointing. And the other thing I find disappointing, Mr. Gomes, is that you didn't come to the hearing. That being said, I think the warning is fair. I think it's justified.
Thank you, Mary.
Can I be heard on that?
If you would, Joe.
We were sent a letter, you are correct. We just had the wrong dates. I had attempted to talk to Mr. Powers, your secretary. I had left word with her that I was down to talk to you about this, so it's not like we just let it go, you know, that we're here today. I was here a few days after the meeting, I had messed up the date and time, that's all. So it's not like we let it slide, and you're correct, we try to tell people, we have signs, but they're so self entitled that they'll walk from my place over to the other place with a drink, and they do the same thing back and forth, no matter how many times you stop them. We try our best.
Thank you.
Julie?
Um, no, I would agree with, you know, Mary, that it is disappointing in the sense of how people act. The only other comment, and I'm fine with the warning, the only other comment I would have is, in the summer months, is it worth having somebody, and I'm sure you, especially with staff these days, it's been hard, but it might be worthwhile having somebody out there. I get it that you're checking every 15 minutes, but maybe would be a future resolution, so.
Don?
Make a motion.
Sure.
I move that we accept the administrator's recommendation and impose a warning on a first-time offense.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Attorney Blake, is that acceptable?
It's acceptable.
Thank you. I'll do a roll call, roll call vote on each of these. Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Thank you. Next is the Port Restaurant Bar, Bar, Inc. Before we get into this one, I have to read, due to a lawsuit that we're involved in in the Port Restaurant, the rule of necessity. The board is deliberating involving the court case 3137 LLC et al. versus Town of Harwich et al., in which each member of the Board of Selectmen is named individually as defendant and may have a financial interest in the litigation. The board is the town's executive authority, and no other board or official can represent the town's interest in this matter. Therefore, upon the advice of Town Council, I am invoking the rule of necessity in order for the board to act on this matter. As stated, my financial interest is that I am named personally as a defendant. I ask that each other board member identify for the record what their financial interest is. Once it's done, the board members are eligible to participate in discussion on this litigation. Don, it is only you and I that have to invoke this, and I just did, so I would ask you to do the same.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As stated, my financial interest also is that I am named personally as a defendant, and that's my disclosure.
Two other board members are new, and they weren't, they are not part of this lawsuit yet, and that's Julie Kavanaugh and Selectman Anderson. Joe, will you read your memo into the record?
Did you need to have a statement opening the hearing?
Oh, I apologize. Mary, will you open the hearing?
I wondered about that. I'd like to open the public hearing. The Harwich Board of Selectmen Notice of Hearing: Alleged Violations of Conditions of Liquor License, December 14th, 2021. The Board of Selectmen will hold a hearing on Tuesday, December 14th, 2021, at 4:00 p.m. for the purpose of consideration of alleged liquor license violations by Port Restaurant and Bar, Inc., located at 541 Route 28 in Harwich Port. The Board of Selectmen will consider possible penalties, including modification, suspend, suspension, revocation, or cancellation of said license. All members of the public having an interest in the topic are cordially invited to attend. The hearing will be held in the Griffin Room at Harwich Town Hall, located at 732 Main Street, Harwich, 02645. Signed by the Board of Selectmen, local licensing authority, and published in the Cape Cod Times, November 30th, 2021.
Thank you, Mary. Joe, now will you read your memo into record?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Memorandum to the Board of Selectmen from Joseph F. Powers, Town Administrator, carbon copy to Megan Eldridge, Assistant Town Administrator, Jeffrey T. Blake, Esquire, KP Law, regarding Port Restaurant and Bar, Incorporated, 541 Route 28, public hearing on alleged violations of the seasonal all-alcoholic beverages license dated December 10, 2021. The Board of Selectmen as local licensing authority, L.L.A., for the town, received a memorandum from Chief David Gilmett of the Harwich Police Department on July 6, 2021, see attached, outlining violations alleged to have occurred on July 1, 2021, and July 3, 2021, at the licensed establishment known as Port Restaurant and Bar, Incorporated, operating at 541 Route 28 in Harwich Port. On July 26, 2021, the Board of Selectmen voted to remand the allegations to me, as town administrator, to conduct a show cause hearing for the purpose of determining whether there is cause for the L.L.A. to hold a hearing to determine whether the facts support a finding of allegations and to recommend to the L.L.A. any potential discipline if the facts so warrant. Based on the board's vote, a show cause hearing was scheduled for September 10, 2021, at 1:00 p.m. in the Griffin Room at Harwich Town Hall. Please note, the hearing on September 10, 2021, was open and continued due to a scheduling conflict. Subsequently, the board received a memorandum from Chief David Gilmett of the Harwich Police Department on August 30th, 2021, outlining violations alleged to have occurred on August 19, 2021. The board voted on September 7, 2021, to remand those allegations to me, as town administrator, and a hearing was convened on October 20th, 2021, concerning all allegations up to that point. Allegation of violations: The town, acting through attorney Jeffrey T. Blake, presented witnesses and exhibits supporting the claim of violation. The establishment, acting through attorney Raymond H. Tomlinson, Jr., presented witnesses and testimony refuting the alleged violations. Events of July 1, 2021. The allegation relating to events of July 1, 2021, is that an underage person used a false identification card to obtain liquor service, allegedly at Port Restaurant and Bar, Incorporated, to the point of overconsumption, parentheses, or over-service from the licensee's standpoint, close parentheses, and further engaged in behavior elsewhere in Harwich Port, for which the Harwich Port, uh, Harwich Police Department was alerted. Findings and determinations: I find that the town did not provide evidence sufficient enough for the town to succeed on appeal to the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission, or A.B.C.C., as would be the licensee's right of appeal. Recommendation of discipline, if any? Whereas I find that there is not sufficient evidence to warrant a finding of illegal activity by the licensed establishment, I do not have any recommendation on discipline. Events of July 3, 2021. The allegation relating to the events of July 3, 2021, is that a complaint of loud noise was called into the Harwich Police Department for noise allegedly emanating from Port Restaurant and Bar, Incorporated. Findings and determinations: I find that the witness for the town confirmed the complaint was lodged at 9:50 p.m. The licensed establishment has an outdoor entertainment license which allows for outside entertainment up to 10 p.m. Additionally, the town's noise bylaw states in part that noises that are, quote, "plainly audible" at a distance of 150 feet from their source between 10 p.m. and 7 a.m., close quote, would constitute a violation of the noise bylaw. Based on the sworn testimony and exhibits provided, I find that the town failed to demonstrate a violation of the outdoor entertainment license, and therefore failed to find a violation of the licensed establishment's liquor license. Recommendation of discipline, if any? Whereas I find that there is not sufficient evidence to warrant a finding of illegal activity by the licensed establishment, I do not have any recommendation on discipline. Events of August 19, 2021. The allegation relating to the events of August 19, 2021, is that while investigating a complaint at a neighboring establishment, officers of the Harwich Police Department became aware of noise emanating from Port Restaurant and Bar, Incorporated. Findings and determinations: I find that a witness for the town confirmed that the music within the confines of the licensed establishment were, quote, "not unreasonable", close quote, but whether, but that, but that when the emergency door was open, the music, quote, "blasted," close quote. This is understood to have occurred at 10:40 p.m. I further find that an exhibit of the town indicated that, upon notice by the police, a representative from the licensed establishment was, quote, "was very cooperative," close quote, and, quote, "there were no additional complaints regarding the port," close quote, that evening. I find that the noise emanating from the licensed establishment occurred after 10 p.m. However, I do not find that there is sufficient evidence to suggest that the noise was, quote, "plainly audible" at a distance of 150 feet from their source between 10 p.m. and 7 a.m., close quote. Therefore, I do not find that the noise does not constitute, sorry, that's a typo. Therefore, I find that the noise does not constitute a violation of the noise bylaw and does not constitute a violation of the licensed establishment's liquor license. Recommendation of discipline, if any? Whereas I find that there is not sufficient evidence to warrant a finding of illegal activity by the licensed establishment, I do not have any recommendation on discipline. This concludes my findings, determinations, and recommendations regarding alleged violations to have occurred at Port Restaurant and Bar, Incorporated, during the timeframe referenced within.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone here from the establishment want to speak at all? Set? Motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Oh, public, I did not go to public. Come on up. My apologies. State your name for the record.
Uh, Joe Ganley? How do I turn this on? Is this on?
Should be on, yes.
Okay, great. Thanks. Just very briefly, Mr. Chairman, and through you to the members of the board, the testimony, the evidence that was presented at the public, at the hearing on this matter, is that on July 3, specifically with respect to the noise complaint, that on July 3, an officer from the Harwich Police Department responded to a complaint about noise at the establishment, that he positioned himself at 400 feet from the establishment, that he observed the noise to be plainly audible. His testimony was that it was, quote, "too loud," that he went to the establishment, that upon speaking with the management of the establishment, he told them that the noise was too loud, that they turned the music off, and that they told him that patrons of the establishment were taking the remote control and turning the music up without the authorization of the management of the establishment. The town administrator's findings is that because all this took place at 9:50, it's not a violation, and in his findings, he quotes and cites the noise bylaw. He does not speak to the liquor license. The liquor license, which is included in the packet for your deliberations this evening, contains the following language, and I quote: Outside entertainment. Noise from entertainment must be at reasonable sound levels, which are not plainly audible at a distance of 150 feet from boundary line or source of sound amplification system, whichever is further. That is the only language on the liquor license. Does not speak to time of day, does not speak to specific hours during which that requirement is not applicable. That is the plain language of the liquor license. You've heard further testimony tonight, more broadly, with respect to the other allegations of over-service, of service of underage people, of trespass, and of breaking and entering. And so the question I have for the board, I guess, or the comment I would make to the board is, I'm not sure what standard we're applying here. The liquor license couldn't be more clear, and in fact, those facts that I outlined for you were not disputed on cross-examination. On cross-examination, the attorney for the licensee talked about three things. Who called in the complaint? What relationship Mr. Powers had with the responding officer? And whether the terms of the liquor license should govern instead of the terms of the noise bylaw? Well, and the third point, I agree with him. The liquor license should govern, and the liquor license couldn't be more clear that a violation, that a noise which is plainly audible at a distance of 150 feet is a violation, regardless of time of day. To take the opposite conclusion that because of Section D in the noise bylaw, which, which is not an exclusive section, it speaks to other matters which may or may not be included as a noise violation, would mean, that interpretation would mean that the noise bylaw is not applicable between the hours of 7 a.m. and 10 p.m. That cannot possibly be the correct interpretation, and it's not the interpretation I would suggest that the town had in mind when they passed the noise bylaw. More importantly, the liquor license is clear. 150 feet plainly audible is a violation. And so we have over-service, we have underage service, we have trespass, we have breaking and entering. What are the neighbors supposed to do if those things are not going to be considered by the town administrator and by this board to be violations? And so the question I would ask is very simply, what would you do if this was your neighborhood? If not come to your town, elected officials, and ask them to adequately enforce the law? What would you do? If there was noise plainly audible at 400 feet, if people were breaking into your house or trespassing in your yard or having to be shooed out of your yard at 2:00 in the morning by the police department? A review of the police reports from July 4 weekend last year will reveal that there were multiple Harwich police officers on site in the C Street neighborhood clearing dozens of drunken patrons out of that neighborhood, out of people's yards. What are we supposed to do, other than come before this board and ask you to enforce the law? Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Blake, any response based on the hearing and the 440-foot comment?
Sure. I, I think that the board has empowered and authorized Mr. Powers to act as their hearing officer. As part of his duties as a hearing officer, he is required to weigh the evidence. Now, as an attorney, and, and I, I can make an argument on both sides of the coin. Mr. Powers, the hearing officer, heard that, and he's come out where he's come out.
Okay, thank you. Joe, just please comment on the 440-foot.
Well, sure, I think the, the points that I would want the board to consider this evening are that there's a noise bylaw, and there's a liquor license, and there's language contained in both, and, and the noise bylaw, it refers to both the noise bylaw and liquor licenses. And so I think there's conflict amongst those documents. However, as Attorney Blake said, I made it clear to anyone participating in the hearings that my role was for anyone to present anything that they considered to be fact and me, for to, for me to evaluate those facts and make determinations, and I stand by that process and I stand by my determinations. The only other comment I would want to make the board aware of is the allegations that were just stated by the previous speaker at the podium are not allegations that were levied, levied specifically against the establishment, and there was not specific notice given. I talk about trespass, I talk about breaking and entering, these are things that were not associated with having occurred because of the establishment. And in fact, I would argue that the testimony that was provided was difficult to follow along that thread. So while others could claim in a court of law, which is not what I presided over, and it was not a quasi judicial hearing, is not what I was presented with. So when I hear legal sounding statements about trespass, breaking and entering, and things of those nature, those were not charges that I understood to be brought before the establishment. I understood that there were charges of noise, and I understood that there may have been charges of over-serving, as well as uses of fake I.D. The town never saw the fake I.D., and when I say the town, I mean me, and I mean people at the hearing. It was no longer available, and so my overall statement for this case particularly, and then any of the cases tonight, is that I've done my duty as I see it fit and appropriate as a hearing officer to provide an opportunity for facts to be presented and for the facts to then come before the board. If I may, Mr. Chairman, I would say that your regulations require you to have these hearings this evening, so you're meeting that obligation under your regulations, and that the board is the sole arbiter of discipline. You can accept my recommendations, you can accept my facts, and you can reject them. It's entirely up to the board, but I, I think the points that I've made need to, to be borne out tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
I want a comment in response to Mr. Ganley, if I may.
You may.
Mr. Ganley attended the show.
Uh, you just got to stand at the mic and identify yourself for the record, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Attorney Ray Tomlinson, I represent the licensee, the Port Restaurant and Bar. At the show cause hearing over which Mr. Powers presided, Mr. Ganley attended in the audience, but did not offer any testimony, was not sworn or otherwise, and his statements today about his view of the evidence from that hearing are inadmissible under any legal standard, but to the extent that his characterization of the evidence does not comport with Mr. Powers' findings, I will just leave that to the board to appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just very quickly, Mr. Chairman, sorry, one comment and rebuttal. There was no invitation at the hearing from members of the public to offer testimony, none whatsoever. I was not called as a witness by either side, I was not invited by the hearing officer to offer any testimony. I would have happily done so. I had been here in person for the entirety of that hearing, I have asked Mr. Powers on numerous occasions to be able to testify at disciplinary hearings, and he has told me that my testimony is not relevant. So the suggestion that I didn't offer testimony at the hearing and that that somehow is dispositive of my testimony here at this public hearing is frankly outrageous, I must say. There was no invitation to offer testimony at that hearing by members of the public, and I was not called as a witness, though I was present for the entire hearing and perfectly happy and willing, and have made clear to Mr. Powers on many occasions my strong fervent desire to testify.
Thank you.
If I may, just to the last point, it's not the hearing officer's role to assemble witnesses or exhibits, it's the towns and the establishments. So if anybody wishes to be a witness or to be part of the process, they should make themselves available to the town, and in this instance, not the hearing officer. It's my job to listen to the facts that are presented through the town's attorney and exhibits and witnesses, and through the establishment and their exhibits and witnesses.
Thank you. Anyone further? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Mary? Comments?
Um, it's, it's pretty disturbing to read, I think. This was probably the one that was the most painful to me. Sorry, I'll get nearer the mic. It sounds like there was an underage individual, totally drunk, and we're lucky she's alive. Putting aside, you know, how she got there, the, the, I think the gist of it is, we can't really prove she drank at the port, and I don't know that we have the police force to go around spending days investigating who drank where, and, um, I don't know. I, I don't see, I'm, I'm with Joe, that I don't see there's a knuf there that would hold up in a court of law, so I think there's no violation, but I think it's disturbing, and I think it's most likely she was at the port.
Don?
In addition to what Mary just said, Mr. Chair, I, I understand where Mr. Ganley's coming from. Unfortunately, I, I believe you're a lawyer also, you could... Unfortunately, I believe you're a lawyer also, unless there was hard evidence introduced into the hearing, everything is hearsay. I mean, and I understand how you're feeling, I understand how all the neighbors in that area are, and anybody who's been watching things over the last year knows that we're concerned, and it's not that we're abandoning the townspeople and it's a sort of Wild West circumstance. But in this particular incident, we don't have the ID from the individual, that was a fake ID. It's not that we're condoning this, but I'm prepared eventually to make a motion, but it's not that we're condoning it, it's just that the evidence entered into the hearing itself doesn't support any kind of penalties at the moment. But I will note to the establishment that they're aware that we are holding people accountable, everybody. We've been saying that now for about a year, and that message is going to come through because there's going to be more of these if things keep happening. And if we have to connect dots better in the future, that's fine, but the here and now is that we don't have enough to be able to do anything about this particular set of incidents, because there isn't any hard evidence that backs up anything that would lead to a conclusion that would result in a penalty. So I'll leave it at that.
Julie?
I agree with the, well, Mary and Dawn, and, you know, without the hard evidence and being able to substantiate claims, not disregarding your comments, sir, but at the same token, we as a board need the evidence. I would say, though, you know, the other note, as whatever motion proceeds, is that any kind of allegation that proves to be true of, you know, underage drinking is a real concern and impacts our entire town and our youth, as well as the neighbors that, you know, that are close by. So I take that seriously, and I would suggest that the port take that very seriously as well.
I mirror some of those comments, and I think that the board has taken the neighbors seriously. I cannot tell you how many times we've talked about this in the last couple of years, and the increased police presence, this process, and making this process public. We are following, listening to your comments, listening to the neighbors' comments, and I think there's been great improvement in Harwichport. Dawn?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we affirm the findings and determinations of the hearing officer, and as a consequence, we recommend, we adopt his recommendation of insufficient evidence to warrant a finding of illegal activity, and there will be no discipline.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
Shall I open the hearing?
You should open the next one for Witchmere Harbor Functions.
Harwich Board of Selectmen Notice of Hearing Alleged Violations of Conditions of Entertainment License December 14, 2021. The Board of Selectmen will hold a hearing on Tuesday, December 14, 2021, at 4:00 p.m. for the purpose of consideration of entertainment license violations by Witchmere Harbor Functions, LP, DBA, Witchmere Harbor Beach and Tennis Club, located at 23 Snow Inn Road, Harwich. The hearing officer will consider possible penalties, including modification, suspension, revocation, or cancellation of said license. All members of the public having an interest in the topic are cordially invited to attend the public hearing, which will be held in the Griffin Room at the Harwich Town Hall, 732 Main Street, Harwich, Mass. 02645. Signed by Joe Powers, Town Administrator, and it was published in the Cape Cod Times, November 30, 2021.
Thank you, Mary. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To Board of Selectmen from Joseph F. Powers, Town Administrator, carbon copy, Megan M. Eldridge, Assistant Town Administrator, Jeffrey T. Blake, Esquire, KP Law. Regarding Witchmere Harbor Functions, LP, doing business as Witchmere Harbor Beach and Tennis Club, 23 Snow Inn Road, Public Hearing on Alleged Violations of the Seasonal All Alcoholic Beverages License, dated December 10, 2021. The Board of Selectmen as local licensing authority, or LLA, for the town, received a memorandum from Chief David Gilmet of the Harwich Police Department on September 9, 2021, see attached, outlining a violation alleged to have occurred on September 2, 2021, at the licensed establishment known as Witchmere Harbor Beach and Tennis Club at 23 Snow Inn Road in Harwichport. On September 20, 2021, the Board of Selectmen voted to remand the allegation to me as Town Administrator to conduct a show cause hearing for the purpose of determining whether there is cause for the LLA to hold a hearing to determine whether the facts support a finding of allegations and to recommend to the LLA any potential discipline if the facts so warrant. Based on the Board's vote, a show cause hearing was convened on November 22, 2021, at 1:00 p.m. in the Griffin Room at Harwich Town Hall. Please note, the original hearing date of November 9, 2021, was rescheduled to the date referenced above. Allegation of Violation: The town acting through attorney Jeffrey T. Blake presented witnesses and exhibits supporting the claim of violation, specifically that the establishment failed to prevent noise emanating from the establishment from being plainly audible between 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. The establishment acting through attorney Andrew L. Singer presented witnesses and testimony to refute the alleged violation. Findings and Determinations: I find that the town did not provide sufficient evidence and testimony to confirm the allegation of violation. Additionally, I find that the witness testimony indicates that the noise emanating from within the establishment was not plainly audible until witnesses were well within 150 feet of the establishment. Recommendation of Discipline, if any: Whereas I do not find that the town demonstrated that the establishment was in violation of the noise by law, and thusly not in violation of the liquor license, I find that there are no grounds for discipline.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone from the establishment wish to comment on this?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, Andrew Singer, attorney on behalf of the applicant. Nothing substantive other than just to note that I am here, and Christopher Colwitz, who is the manager of the establishment, is here as well in case there are any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wish to comment on this? A motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Roll call, vote. Dawn?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Comments? Dawn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, but I don't have any.
Mary?
This looks appropriate. I mean, it was 10:30, and it was when one door was left open. They've had 30 events since then with no issues, so I back Joe's recommendation.
Julie?
Same, I don't have any other.
Can I get a motion?
I move that the board affirms the findings and determinations of the town administrator, and that therefore, no disciplinary action will be imposed upon the Witchmere Harbor Club.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, vote. Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Moving on to D, Lucky Labrador, Inc., DBA Perks, 545 Route 28. Mary?
Harwich Board of Selectmen Notice of Hearing Alleged Violations of Conditions of Liquor License December 14, 2021. The Board of Selectmen will hold a hearing on Tuesday, December 14, 2021, at 4:00 p.m. for the purpose of consideration of alleged liquor license violations by Lucky Labrador, Inc., DBA Perks, located at 545 Route 28, Harwichport. The Board of Selectmen will consider possible penalties, including modification, suspension, revocation, or cancellation of said license. All members of the public having an interest in the topic are cordially invited to attend the hearing, which will be in the Griffin Room at the Harwich Town Hall, 732 Main Street, Harwich, Mass. 02645. Signed by the Board of Selectmen, the local licensing authority, and published in the Cape Cod Times, November 30, 2021.
Thank you, Mary. Joe, will you read your memo?
Thank you. Memo to the Board of Selectmen from Joseph F. Powers, Town Administrator, carbon copy to Megan M. Eldridge, Assistant Town Administrator, attorney Jeffrey Blake, KP Law. Regarding Lucky Labrador Incorporated, DBA Perks, 545 Route 28, Public Hearing on Alleged Violations of the Seasonal All Alcoholic Beverages License, dated December 10, 2021. The Board of Selectmen serving as local licensing authority, or LLA, for the town, received a memorandum from Chief David Gilmet of the Harwich Police Department on June 14, 2021, see attached, outlining violations alleged to have occurred on June 5, 2021, June 11, 2021, and June 13, 2021, at the licensed establishment known as Perks, operating at 545 Route 28 in Harwichport. On June 21, 2021, the Board of Selectmen voted to remand the allegations to me as Town Administrator to conduct a show cause hearing for the purpose of determining whether there is cause for the LLA to hold a hearing to determine whether the facts support a finding of allegations, and to recommend to the LLA any potential discipline if the facts so warrant. Based on the Board's vote, a show cause hearing was scheduled for July 8, 2021, at 1:00 p.m. in the Griffin Room at Harwich Town Hall. Please note, the hearing on July 8, 2021, was continued to July 23, 2021, at 10:00 a.m. in the Griffin Room at Harwich Town Hall. Allegations of Violations: The town acting through attorney Jeffrey T. Blake presented witnesses and exhibits supporting the claim of violation. The establishment acting through its owner and manager, Taylor Powell, presented witnesses and testimony refuting the alleged allegations. Events of June 5, 2021: The allegation relating to the events of June 5, 2021, is that there was music emanating from outside speakers located at the licensed premises beyond the time allowed, quote, "after 2,200 hours," end quote, under the entertainment license. Findings and Determinations: The licensed establishment has an outdoor license which allows, outdoor entertainment license which allows for outdoor, outside entertainment up to 10:00 p.m. However, the town's noise by law states in part that noises that are, quote, "plainly audible" at a distance of 150 feet from their source between 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m., close quote, would constitute a violation of the noise by law. Based on the sworn testimony and exhibits provided, I find that the town failed to demonstrate a violation of the noise by law, as it was not demonstrated that the noise was plainly audible beyond 150 feet from the source, and therefore failed to find a violation, failed to find a violation of the licensed establishment's liquor license. Recommendation of Discipline, if any: Whereas I find that there is not sufficient evidence to warrant a finding of illegal activity by the licensed establishment, I do not have any recommendation on discipline. Events of June 11, 2021: The allegation relating to the events of June 11, 2021, is that a complaint of loud noise was called into the Harwich Police Department for noise allegedly emanating from Perks at 8:14 p.m. Finding and Determinations: I find that the witness for the town confirmed that the complaint was lodged at 8:14 p.m. The licensed establishment has an outdoor entertainment license which allows for outside entertainment up to 10:00 p.m. Additionally, the town's noise by law states in part that noises that are, quote, "plainly audible" at a distance of 150 feet from their source between 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m., would constitute a violation of the noise by law. Based on the sworn testimony and exhibits provided, I find that the town failed to demonstrate a violation of the outdoor entertainment license, and therefore failed to find a violation of the licensed establishment's liquor license. Recommendation of Discipline, if any: Whereas I find that there is not sufficient evidence to warrant a finding of illegal activity by the licensed establishment, I do not have any recommendation on discipline. The allegation relating to the events of June 13, 2021, is that there was an alleged altercation in front of Perks. Finding and Determination: I find that the town did not provide evidence sufficient enough for the town to succeed on appeal to the Alcohol Beverages Control Commission, or ABCC, as would be the licensee's right of appeal. Recommendation of Discipline, if any: Whereas I find that there is not sufficient evidence to warrant a finding of illegal activity by the licensed establishment, I do not have any recommendation on discipline. Matters Wherein the Licensee Was Represented by Counsel: The Board of Selectmen as local licensing authority, or LLA, for the town, received a memorandum from Chief David Gilmet of the Harwich Police Department on August 30, 2021, see attached, outlining violations alleged to have occurred on July 24, 2021, at the licensed establishment known as Perks, operating at 545 Route 28 in Harwichport. On September 7, 2021, the Board of Selectmen voted to remand the allegation to me as Town Administrator to conduct a show cause hearing for the purpose of determining whether there is cause for the LLA to hold a hearing to determine whether the facts support a finding of allegation, and to recommend to the LLA any potential discipline if the facts so warrant. Based on the Board's vote, a show cause hearing was scheduled for October 20, 2021, at 1:00 p.m. in the Griffin Room at Harwich Town Hall. Please note, the hearing on October 20, 2021, was initially postponed until November 10, 2021. However, the board received a memo on October 12, 2021, from Chief Gilmet concerning violations alleged to have occurred on October 3, 2021. The matters pertaining to July 24 and October 3 were heard on November 23, 2021, at 1:00 p.m. in the Griffin Room. Allegations of Violations: The town acting through attorney Jeffrey T. Blake presented witnesses and exhibits supporting the claim of violation. The establishment acting through attorney Benjamin E. Zender presented witnesses and testimony refuting the alleged violations. Events of July 24, 2021: The allegations relating to the events of July 24, 2021, are that Perks served an underage patron and overserved a patron. Findings and Determinations: I find that the town did not provide sufficient enough, evidence sufficient enough for the town to succeed on appeal to the Alcohol Beverages Control Commission, or ABCC, as would be the licensee's right of appeal. Recommendation of Discipline, if any: Whereas I find that there is not sufficient evidence to warrant a finding of illegal activity by the licensed establishment, I do not have any recommendation on discipline. Events of October 30, 2021: The allegation relating to the events of October 3, 2021, is that there was an alleged noise violation in front of Perks. Finding and Determinations: I find that the noise emanating from the licensed establishment occurred after 10:00 p.m., and the town did provide sufficient evidence of a noise violation, specifically that a detective sergeant testified to the noise, quote, "being, quote, plainly audible," close quote, more than 150 feet from the establishment, parentheses, the testimony indicated, quote, "approximately 550 feet in a straight line," close quote, close parentheses. Recommendation of Discipline, if any: Whereas I find there is sufficient evidence to warrant a finding of illegal activity by the licensed establishment, yet the licensed establishment does not have prior findings occurring within the preceding two years, I recommend that the town discontinue permitting outdoor entertainment at any establishment within the town of Harwich for the 2022 calendar year and licensing period. This concludes my findings, determinations, and recommendations regarding alleged violations to have occurred at Perks during the timeframe referenced within.
Thank you, Joe.
Can I just ask you to clarify, Joe? Your letter says you recommend that the town discontinue, but it sounded like you said continue, which...
Sorry. I recommend that the town discontinue permitting outdoor entertainment at any establishment within the town of Harwich for the 2022 calendar year and licensing period. That the town discontinue permitting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone here from the establishment?
My name is Ben Zender, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, and I'm here not to make any statements, but just to try to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? A motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call. Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Board deliberation? Julie?
So I struggle with banning music entirely. I think it's done a lot for Harwichport.
You speak up a little bit, sorry.
Sure. I struggle with the recommendation, though I appreciate it, Joe, in terms of banning music. I think that, you know, we're struggling ourselves to how to control all of these pieces of the pie, but I also think they contribute to a pretty vibrant downtown, and it is for a couple of months out of the year. So I'd be interested to see how the other board members feel, because I find that a difficult, a difficult finding. Thanks.
Thank you, Julie. Mary?
I agree, that is difficult, but I don't know how to swing this pendulum. I don't know what the right thing is to do to, and I also find it, I understand the difference between being able to prove something, same as the incident we talked about at the port. Again, we're talking some over-serving. We probably can't prove it legally, but there's different, there's a preponderance of evidence that would tell me that happened. So I believe there is some over-serving and underage serving, and the entertainment probably leads to that. I remember being in my twenties, and that's where you want to go and drink, and I don't know how to fix this. I'm with Julie, I don't know about banning it completely is the way to go, and I don't know. Dawn, you're wise. Oh, sorry, Mr. Oh, sorry, Mr. Chair. Come down.
Go ahead.
Was that wise or wisecracking? Well, I'll disclose, I had a club band for a lot of years, did live entertaining, and one thing I do know, I understand where Julie's coming from, but we're kind of shoehorning something into a pre-existing community. The clubs I played in were not in close proximity to people who had houses, never mind multi-hundred-thousand-dollar establishments, that should be able to enjoy quiet comfort in their houses. I've been trying to grapple with this for the longest time, and I know you were watching and you were there, and talking about acoustic entertainment to try to mitigate. The other thing we're fighting against here is acoustically, depending on where the wind blows, I mean, it sounds silly when you're saying it, but it's true. Sound travels on Cape Cod in a kind of odd way. There are times I can hear distinctly conversations across my cul-de-sac from people standing in front of a house, and there are other times it sounds like a blowtorch in my window, and I can't hear anything from anybody. So that makes this kind of hard to grapple with circumstance. As to the underage stuff, though, can I ask something through the chair to the chief? Were we seeing physically any underage IDs or, you know, fake IDs or cells, regardless of whether they were brought to a hearing? I'm just curious about that aspect of it.
Mr. Chair, Chief David Gilmet, Chief of Police, Selectman Howell. I believe in this particular instance, it was an individual who was intoxicated and fell through a fence, and he was later determined to be underage, and that was proven that he was underage.
I'm assuming then, were you to actually be on the scene if somebody had a fake ID that you would confiscate that?
Yes.
Okay. And as long as you're here, I do want you to hear this, and I believe I represent the board, they can all opine themselves, but I personally appreciate where we're at, because for the longest time, it wasn't a priority of the board, and that translated into it wasn't a priority for you folks. It's not as if you have so many police you don't know where to deploy them. We have made this an absolute high priority, I believe we've told you it's the highest priority we have ultimately, and the fact that we're here means that we are going to continue to show that. I hope that you don't get dispirited and none of the folks on your force do if we don't impose, you know, what they would have hoped for, but we want to hear what's going on, and eventually this message, whether people get imposed punishments or not, has got to get through to everybody that even one time is one time too many. If somebody drives off and finds themselves impaled on a telephone pole or something, there's no coming back from that. Civil penalties are always available to people who get overpoured and sent out into the public, so I would hope that everybody understands that. You might get off here, but that doesn't mean you're going to get off everywhere all the time. So it's really important. I don't know, however, in all deference to the hearing officer, that we can adopt a recommendation that includes, for one license, that includes a recommendation about what we do for all licenses, if you understand where I'm coming from.
I do, I would defer to counsel on that.
I feel really uncomfortable making that a finding specific to this, because you're talking about in all circumstances in a whole year.
I'll call on counsel after my comments. I struggle with this also, I struggle with it on many levels, and not on the music level, because I do think that Harwichport is a great asset to the town, and I think that the businesses, when acting responsible, is a great asset to this town. Working with the neighbors, we've talked about communication, working with the neighbors is extremely important. I know some olive branches have been extended, but I could not consider a global discipline, and I think that that's a policy decision, not punishing the rest of the businesses because of one hearing. So just the way it's written, I could not support it. I do recognize, though, that the amount of time and resources that the town is putting into this, and money, taxpayers' money, all the taxpayers' money, lawsuits, countless hours from our town administrator being a hearing officer, countless hours from this Board of Selectmen, countless hours, billable hours from our attorney, I think tonight there's more attorneys in the room than we've ever had. It's a, and I'd be remiss if I didn't say to the police department, the police department and the resources for the police department, as this town grows, are being spread awfully thin. And the amount today, prior to this hearing, the decision was made to not have all 14 officers involved in these cases sit in this room tonight at overtime, because I believe that the town administrator is a hearing officer, and the notes that we had were enough. But it's endless resources, it's endless frustration from neighbors, and at some point, this board has to make a decision. You know, one of Joe's comments earlier was that the liquor license conflicts with the noise bylaw. Sounds to me like that's the first thing we need to fix. There are some other things that we need to do and the establishments need to do, and everybody needs to band together so that we can keep this asset to Harwichport. And globally, unfortunately, it would affect other parts of town that are not a problem. So this, Joe, based on how I'm reading it, and the establishment not having a violation over two years, would warrant a warning, as we've done for others, as a disciplinary action. But we have, we can go many steps in the discipline, and it doesn't have to be just a warning, but to globally punish everybody for this is not something I would support. Joe, do you have anything to say, or?
I don't.
You're all set? Attorney Blake?
I'd be happy to address that. I think the question was, can you give such a global penalty for a violation of a single in a unique establishment? You know, in my opinion, having come to this somewhat late, but having gone through every one of these hearings, I understand that the outdoor entertainment is a huge source of complaints and a huge source of friction throughout the town. The only issue that I have with the recommendation is that it's a one-size-fits-all, and as you just correctly pointed out, there are parts of town that don't have any of these issues, and haven't had, or establishments in town that haven't had any complaints. So in my opinion, the penalty should be limited to or focused on this individual establishment.
Thank you. Don? Benny, do you want to speak?
I'd like to respond if possible.
Go ahead.
Yeah. I promised everyone I wouldn't speak, but...
Attorney's end here.
And I don't get paid by the word, but I have to say something. First of all, to go back a couple of steps, first of all, I don't intend to wade into the policy quest of whether or not you should have entertainment in any particular part of Harwich. That's between you and the citizenry, and I think that's where it should lie. I do think, having worked with the chief and his department on noise problems in the past, on both sides of this issue, in different, both residential and commercial contexts, I think that your noise bylaw doesn't really work to address both private noise issues and commercial noise issues in the context of entertainment and liquor licenses. I think it puts the officers in an unfair position of having to measure off 150 feet, which, you know, looking at this room, is probably about three times the length of this room, maybe. So that, those have to do with how you address your own bylaw, and I wish you well with that. With regard to this particular activity, what didn't get brought up tonight, but did get brought up in the hearing, was the fact that underage service for these establishments is a very, very difficult thing for them to deal with, and I understand how the board may say, look, we can't condone that, and we have to make sure that we keep a heavy, heavy watch over that. But the department did a really good investigation, you know, Detective Sergeant Brackett, I thought testified clearly, they did their background work, they found out exactly what happened, to the extent that they could. But what we find is that some of these, and I'll call them kids, because from my perspective they are, will have multiple IDs. You know, they'll have a fake ID and a real ID. They get pulled over by the police, the real one comes out. When they try to get into the bar, the fake one comes out. And so, you know, the testimony at the hearing through my client was that, you know, they use, they use software to scan these IDs, they have protocols for monitoring this. It didn't come out till this particular individual was underage, until after the incident, when it actually came back to my client and the police, you know, pulled the license and saw what it said. So I don't want the board to think before it considers this punishment that our clients had a willful disregard for who was walking in their door. They do their, but IDs these days, as my client would tell you if you were here right now, are, they're very beautifully crafted, and they actually make it through these scanning systems and everything else. And so I'm hoping that when you impose whatever discipline you want tonight, you understand that this wasn't simply, you know, trying to allow underage people into the establishment. And thank you.
Thank you. Don?
So I wonder if I could speak?
Unfortunately, you cannot. I asked the public earlier, and we closed the public hearing. I did let the representative of Perks speak, but I will not let the public speak at this point. Don?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the board affirms the findings and determination of the town administrator, but that the board recommends the issuance of a warning, you know, to the license pertaining to Perks.
Before that seconded, Don, I would, I would ask that recommend isn't the right word.
That we, that we impose a punishment of a warning letter for the establishment Perks.
Any second.
I'll second it for conversation.
Okay, and we'll start with you on conversation.
I just wonder if a warning is enough? I mean, we're going from shutting down music all over town to a, to a letter. I don't know. Should there be a suspension of entertainment for this? Or, I don't know. That's just...
Julie?
So when I read through the documents, I see, I think it was June 12th, or I think it was June 12th, that they suspended all their outdoor music. So I think, and there's further, you know, details on trying to get a grip on the noise bylaw and talking to our police, which, you know, again, I respect that, because I think to Attorney Zander's point, we do have a difficult issue going on with our zoning bylaw, and we've talked about that as a board, in terms of having to deal with reviewing that and how to address it. We also have a density issue in Harwichport that, you know, again, with full appreciation for the neighbors, I can imagine it's difficult at times, but there's also a density involved there, that when you're purchasing in Harwichport, you're surrounded by commercial buildings, and that in and itself, you know, to your earlier point, Mr. Chair, that I, you know, I think is really paramount here, and it's, it's been an issue when we tried to create better parking situations downtown. You know, rather than everybody butting heads, it would be great if somehow the communication could improve greatly on both sides to get to a happy medium. Now, I know that that may sound like Shangri-La, and probably is, but, you know, I think there's so much more involved here in terms of how we address these issues. The underage drinking is a huge problem, not only for the town, but for these establishments. And, you know, I appreciate the comment on how difficult it is with software, et cetera, and I'm sure where there's a will, there's a way. At the same token, whatever the businesses can do to crack down on that, because that's a huge liability for them as well. So I think it's a complicated issue. I think that Perks tried to, you know, deal with, with the noise bylaw and trying to understand it. I think we're putting our offices in a very difficult situation of 150 feet. So I'm okay with a warning, I just think that we have a lot of work to do. And I think that both the businesses, as well as the board, as well as the neighbors, have a lot of work to do, and communication and all of that. I think we all play a role in it. So I, and I appreciate the time and energy spent by our chief, by the officers, and the cost that it is to our town. So, again, trying to act for the citizens and the taxpayers in town, the board is trying to, to address these things as serious issues, but we also have to look at the reasonableness and the rationalness of all of these items, as well as the fiscal impact. So I hope we can get someplace better than where we are.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's two aspects that I'd just like to put out there for everybody. Every board has the opportunity to create whatever policies the board wants to. Recognizing that, I just want to point out that when all of this process started, that we had committed to a policy of progressive punishment. And in order to follow that track, you would start, unless there were egregious circumstances at the, at the beginning, to establish that there has been now a violation, so the next one would be something more than that. And it's transparent, everybody out there knows that's the, that's the pathway. And the other thing, and I just want to put this on the record, sadly, from my old planning board days, I want to say, from my recollection of that planning district, you know, that area of town, the depth of the commercial district happens to be 150 feet. So the margin for error here is almost nonexistent. We do have to commit ourselves to looking at the bylaw, but the bylaw we have is the bylaw we have to use, and so I'm going to stick with the recommendation I made, despite the fact, like I said, in general, everybody's got to understand that we're not going to tolerate things in the future that might have been tolerated in the past. It's not because we're picking on anybody, it's because there's been a paradigm shift that we can't allow this to get worse.
Okay, we have a motion in a second on the violation to issue a warning. Any further discussion? Roll call, Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Next up is the Seal Pub.
Harwich Board of Selectmen Notice of Hearing: Alleged violations of conditions of liquor license, December 14th, 2021. The Board of Selectmen will hold a hearing on Tuesday, December 14th, 2021, at 4:00 p.m. for the purpose of consideration of alleged liquor license violations by Beachlight LLC DBA Seal Pub, located at 703 Main Street, Harwich. The Board of Selectmen will consider possible penalties, including modification, suspension, revocation, or cancellation of said license. All members of the public having an interest in the topic are cordially invited to attend the public hearing, which will be held in the Griffin Room at the Harwich Town Hall, 732 Main Street, Harwich, Mass. 02645. Signed by the Board of Selectmen, Local Licensing Authority, and published in the Cape Cod Times, November 30th, 2021.
Thank you, Mary. Joe, read your memo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Memorandum to the Board of Selectmen from Joseph F. Powers, Town Administrator, Carbon Copy to Megan M. Eldridge, Assistant Town Administrator, Jeffrey T. Blake, Esquire, KP Law. Regarding Beachlight LLC DBA Seal Pub, 703 Main Street, Public Hearing on Alleged Violations of the Annual All Alcoholic Beverages License, dated December 10th, 2021. The Board of Selectmen as local licensing authority, or LLA, for the town, received several memoranda from Chief David Gilmet of the Harwich Police Department, dated May 25th, 2021, June 2nd, 2021, June 7th, 2021, June 28th, 2021, and August 30th, 2021, attached. The memoranda detailed alleged violations to have occurred on May 22nd, 2021, May 29th, 2021, June 5th, 2021, June 26th, 2021, and August 25th, 2021, detailing alleged violations to have occurred at Seal Pub at 703 Main Street and Harwich Center. The Board of Selectmen voted to remand the allegations to me as town administrator to conduct a show cause hearing for the purpose of determining whether there is cause for the LLA to hold a hearing to determine whether the facts support a finding of allegations and to recommend to the LLA any potential discipline if the facts so warrant. The table below attempts to account for the dates of the chief's memos related to the dates of the alleged violations and, parenthetically, the violations alleged to have occurred, closed parentheses, and the corresponding vote of the board to remand the matters to me. The table has four columns, the headlines are Chief's Memo, Allegation Date, Allegations Cited, and Vote of the Board to Remand. May 25th, 2021 was the chief's memo on allegations of May 22nd, 2021. The allegations cited were over-serving and serving after hours. The vote of the board to remand that was June 1st. The chief's memo of June 2nd, 2021, relates to allegation dated May 29th, 2021, with an allegation cited of over-serving. Vote of the board to remand, June 7th, 2021. Chief's memo, June 7th, 2021, allegation date, June 5th, 2021, allegations cited, over-serving and noise. Vote of the board to remand, June 15th, 2021. The hearing date for the above matters began on July 8th, 2021. A chief's memo dated June 28th, 2021, with an allegation date of June 26th, 2021, with an allegation of noise, was voted by the board to remand to me, July 12th, 2021. The hearing for the above matter was... The hearing for the above matter was held on July 27, 2021. And chief's memo dated August 30, 2021, with an allegation date of August 25, 2021, for an allegation cited of noise from the outdoor entertainment. Vote of the board remanding to me on September 7, 2021. The hearing for that above matter was held on October 21, 2021. Allegations of violations. The town, acting through Attorney Jeffrey T. Blake, presented witnesses and exhibits supporting the claims of violations. The establishment, acting as their own counsel, represented by Mr. Robert Young and Mr. Josh Winston, presented witnesses and testimony refuting the alleged violations. The events of May 22, 2021. The allegations relating to the events of May 22, 2021, are that a patron was allegedly over-served and that staff members were present after hours in the establishment drinking alcohol. Findings and determinations. I find that the town did not provide sufficient, excuse me, did not provide evidence sufficient of the allegation of over-serving a patron for the town to succeed on appeal to the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission, or ABBCC, as would be the licensee's right of appeal. However, I do find that the town did provide sufficient evidence, namely sworn testimony by a Harwich Police Department sergeant and corroborated by testimony of a witness from the establishment, that employees were drinking within the establishment after hours. Recommendation of discipline, if any. Whereas the licensed establishment does not have any violations on record, with the town having occurred within two years of this violation, this violation constitutes a first offense. Whereas I do find that there is a violation of the licensed establishment's liquor license, which constitutes a first offense, I will offer my recommendation on discipline at the conclusion of this report, pending additional allegations and potential findings. Events of May 29, 2021. The allegations relating to the events of May 29, 2021, are that a patron was allegedly over-served. Findings and determinations. I find that the town did not provide evidence sufficient on the allegation of over-serving a patron for the town to succeed on appeal to the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission, or ABBCC, as would be the licensee's right of appeal. Recommendation of discipline, if any. Whereas I do not find that the town demonstrated that the establishment was in violation of their liquor license, I find that there are no grounds for discipline. Events of June 5, 2021. The allegations relating to the events of June 5, 2021, are that a patron was allegedly over-served and there was noise emanating from the establishment after 10:00 p.m. Findings and determinations. I find that the town did not provide evidence sufficient on the allegation of over-serving a patron for the town to succeed on appeal to the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission, or ABBCC, as would be the licensee's right of appeal. I find that the town did provide sufficient evidence, namely sworn testimony from a Harwich Police Department sergeant, excuse me, detective sergeant, that there was noise emanating from the establishment and the parking lot adjacent to the establishment plainly audible to the detective sergeant at a distance of more than 150 feet after 10:00 p.m. Recommendation of discipline, if any. Whereas I do find that there is a violation of the licensed establishment's liquor license, which constitutes a second offense, I will offer my recommendation on discipline at the conclusion of this report, pending alleged allegations and potential findings. Events of June 26, 2021. The allegation relating to the events of June 26, 2021, is that noise was emanating from the establishment after 10:00 p.m. Findings and determination. I find that the town did provide sufficient evidence, namely sworn testimony from a Harwich Police Detective Sergeant, that there was noise emanating from the establishment and the parking lot adjacent to the establishment plainly audible to the detective sergeant at a distance of more than 150 feet after 10:00 p.m. Recommendation of discipline, if any. Whereas I do find that there is a violation of the licensed establishment's liquor license, which constitutes a third offense, I will offer my recommendation on discipline at the conclusion of this report, pending additional allegations and potential findings. Events of August 25, 2021. The allegation relating to the events of August 25, 2021, is that noise was emanating from the establishment after 10:00 p.m. Findings and determinations. I find that the town did provide sufficient evidence, namely sworn testimony from a Harwich Police Officer, that there was noise emanating from the establishment and the parking lot adjacent to the establishment plainly audible to the police officer at a distance of more than 150 feet after 10:00 p.m. Recommendation of discipline, if any. Whereas I do find that there is a violation of the licensed establishment's liquor license, which constitutes a fourth offense, I recommend that the town discontinue permitting outdoor entertainment in any establishment within the town of Harwich for the 2022 calendar year and licensing period. Additionally, I recommend a warning related to the first offense of drinking in the establishment after hours. This concludes my findings, determinations, and recommendations regarding alleged violations to have occurred at Seal Pub during the timeframe referenced within.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone from the establishment here that wishes to speak?
Hey guys, Josh Winston, one of the owners, Seal Pub Cafe. Just wanted to thank the board for their considerations, also to the town administrator for working through some of those early Memorial Day and early June issues with us. I think we've taken the appropriate action since then to rectify the situation, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? A motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote, Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Same recommendation was made on another one, and we hashed this out, so hopefully we can get past that, talk about the four violations, found violations, and have our conversation centered on that. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was going to say, there's no way that I would consider that first part, but what I'm wrestling with, and this is part and parcel of what I said before about the progressive punishment that we're committed to assessing, in this case, it's kind of difficult because we shot ourselves in the foot. We wound up with one hearing for four violations, and I'm not sure where the rest of the board wants to fall, but we've got one hearing on record, which causes me some concern. I also want to say something that may sound off point, but it isn't. It's anecdotal, we certainly can't, it's not in any way going to enter into my decision-making here, but I want to say it because you got to hear it. My son was involved, I believe in the middle of the summer, with a colossal 10 mile per hour fender bender in the middle of town. And when they pulled over, the officer was questioning the purported driver of the first car. And I say that only because it was a date situation with a young man and a young woman. Number one, anecdotally, the young woman said she was driving, but was underage and didn't want to particularly divulge that to the police, so they swapped by the time the police came. And they both told my son they had eaten and they had been drinking somewhere else, but they had heard the Seal Pub was a great place to go for after-hours drinks. That's where they were going, to have additional drinks. So, the problem of overpouring in all of these districts is we're a victim of our own success. I know my own daughter has said, wow, I can't believe when I was growing up here, everybody would go to Chatham or Hyannis, and Harwich Port is a happening place to go now, or Harwich in general. With that comes a whole lot of responsibility, because it's not just successful and that's great for the businesses and for the town, but it also carries the burden that you've got a reputation that it's the place to go, and you're going to be expecting that that's going to be an attempt at least at all of your establishments. And you got to recognize that unfortunately, it's always the license holder's burden to be able to control that. And you take that on willingly by applying for a license when it has conditions associated with it. And, I mean, I had a package store license, and I know that I had one violation at one point, because it's almost impossible to try to hold that tide back. So, occasionally you have an employee that's not capable of performing in the way that you want them to, because they're trying to be nice. Unfortunately, nice doesn't enter into the situation with overpouring. So, I'm centered back again with the, you're right, we got a bunch of numerous violations. I'd like to think that the message got out, because as the summer went on, that didn't seem to be a pervasive problem again, and we got one hearing. I guess I'd have to ask Jeffrey, where would we go with that? Because it's one hearing for four alleged violations, and I would hate to jump the line on the progressive part of the discipline, because we have numbers that we saved up.
Sure. There were a couple of different hearing authority hearings. It's one hearing tonight. I believe that you could say that there were four separate allegations here. That being said, your regulations allow you to deviate up if there are extenuating circumstances, and I believe it's inherent in your ability to also deviate down if you find that strictly adhering to it would be a gross bastardization of the regulations or not in keeping with their intent. But I think that you could, in my legal opinion, you could have four separate violations, and you could discipline them according to that. But again, as I just pointed out, you have the, I believe you have the inherent ability to go up and down if circumstances so warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. I figured we did, but I won't be making a motion on this, because I want to get the sense of what the board wants to do, to be honest with you, because I'm just struggling with it.
Julie?
Yeah, I think having, trying to decipher through four different things, and some of them sort of emanate from the bar out to the parking lot and other pieces, that I guess I would almost go back to my initial statement to Mr. Gomes about how to kind of keep that activity closer under review as patrons are coming and going, and you've got doormen, and you've got people supposedly leaving or being kicked out because they were drunk. You know, I think that we have to be careful. I mean, if you've got stuff going on in a parking lot, or you've told somebody to leave your establishment, there is something that comes with the responsibility of where is that person going? What are they doing? We have an officer who picks somebody up stumbling down the street and brings them home. I mean, there's enough in here to say that, you know, there are some things that have gone wrong, terribly wrong, but at the same token, you know, they're all lumped into one hearing. And so, you know, I, again, we talked earlier about the other thing about closing down music across the board. In this situation where we haven't had more recent issues, and I do think that, again, goes back to Mary's point about, you know, we can't just let things continue on, but we, as a board, need to dial it back and figure out how we're going to address a lot of these issues, and then send the message that, you know, we're working hard, and we expect the businesses to work hard as well. And we expect, again, that communication between the neighbors and the businesses to also be realistic and worked through. So, if you want to know where I'm kind of going with this, I'm thinking we go back maybe to a warning here where we haven't had recent issues, and we go back and say, you know, if this is a repeat, it's just not tolerable, this can't continue to happen. And again, our police shouldn't have to be picking up people saying that they were drinking someplace, stumbling down the street, and getting them home safely. That should be on the bar to do. That's how I feel.
I'd just start with telling, saying that my appreciation for, Mary, go ahead.
Did you want me to talk first?
Go ahead. I didn't get you yet?
No.
Oh, go ahead.
I guess I've said enough. I feel the same way about this as the other two that had instances of over-serving. Yeah, legally, we can't prove it, but I'm pretty damn sure it happened, and it happened there. The person that was passed out in somebody else's car, I mean, you're going to skate on that one, because we can't prove it, but I'm pretty sure that happened at that establishment. And I want you to clamp down on that. That's a problem. The noise, there's four violations. I'm guessing my brothers and sisters want to go with a warning. I'd be more inclined to take the entertainment away for a couple of days. Maybe four days, one for each offense. That's my mean Mary thought.
This is a liquor license. This is a hearing on a liquor license.
That's not just...
It's a hearing on their liquor license, so we're not going to, we can't punish their entertainment license.
We could.
Is that what I'm...
Yeah, that's what my brother wants to do. She could suspend the license for one day. The liquor license for one day, yep.
You also have...
I am, but I thought we were talking noise, too.
The violation of liquor license.
Violation of liquor license, okay. I didn't intend to take their liquor license away.
So, I want to appreciate Josh Winston, one of the three owners. His attitude through this has been, in the hearings and in public, his attitude has been, yeah, we did it. Certainly, there were some things that he argued that there was no finding of facts, but his willingness to work with the town, he didn't turn a lawyer loose on us, he copped to, copped to it, yeah, I did it, and here's how we're going to fix it. And I'll speak specifically to Josh and thank Josh, because I think you made the process easy for us. That's the nice side of this. We have four violations, and I don't believe that a warning on four violations is fair to the other businesses that had one violation and got a warning. There's been a lot with Seal Pub in Harwich Center, and some found, some unfound. You're in historic Harwich Center, it's a single building, it's the only building there, so it's not the combination of two bars next to each other in Harwich Port and combined noise. It's your noise. There's a lot of very close neighbors there, behind you. The parking lot bothers me. A lot of what's coming out of this is coming out of the parking lot, and your acknowledgement to fixing that will definitely weigh in on my decision, because I think you are willing to work with the town, you're demonstrating that you're willing to work with the town, but I can't, I can't go with one warning on four violations, whether it's one hearing or not. There has to be, in my mind, a one-day suspension or a two-day suspension, and a meaningful one, not in the middle of wintertime when we're closed. Further discussion? Mary?
I'd agree with that. I'd back you on that, Michael.
Julie? I mean, Don?
I thought I was the one who left my regular glasses with the optometrist. Going back on what I said, because I got the sense of everybody here, I'm going to make a motion that we, the board affirms the findings and determinations of the town administrator, that as to the matter of the first offense of drinking in the establishment after hours, that we issue a warning letter to the establishment, and that further, based on compound violations of the entertainment license, that we assess a penalty of suspension of the liquor license for pouring on the first Friday of June.
First Friday of...
First Friday in June, which would be a meaningful date, because it's the beginning of when your business would pick up again, and it's not in the middle of a week, but it's a message that everybody needs to hear, but it's a message that will go away if the licensee winds up doing what they've been doing, which appears to be addressing the issue. We're hoping that that's the case. But it's kind of hard to ignore multiple ones, because the message that we're sending to other establishments is really poor, unless we assess something. I'm with Michael on that.
So we have a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Now discussion, Don, do you want to finish?
I'm done with that.
Julie?
I'm not adverse to, you know, having a one-day penalty to show that we do mean business, and I do think, you know, moving forward, we should be careful about compounding all the hearings into, you know, all the violations into one hearing. But, yeah, I'd be, I'd go ahead with that.
Mary, any conversation?
No, I think that's fair. I think it does, as Julie said, kind of set the bar for where we're at.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to do a roll call, I apologize. Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Thank you. Moving on to the new business. Summation of show cause hearing process and discussion on future hearing process going forward, presented by the town administrator, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if you wanted to take a brief recess, or if you wanted to continue on.
I'm good with a recess if anyone's going to leave, but it looks like they're staying for this.
We probably want them to heal, too, wouldn't we?
Their choice.
The same response I get from my family, they're all walking out.
Unless you're sick of reading.
Yeah, reading I don't like. Talking I love, and so I was hoping to talk. Sorry, board members, you had your chance. No, in all sincerity, yeah, they have to be on video. First of all, thank you for the chair and the... First of all, thank you for the chair and the board for your, what I would call indulgence on this topic and for that brief recess, because it offers me an opportunity to give you my thoughts as your town administrator and in these past matters as a hearing officer. And looking in the direction of our council, probably have some latitude in talking with this topic about how I feel, if I could, meaning none of the things that I could do as your hearing officer. And I wanted to emphasize that, not for the board, but for any of those that are still here, but also folks that may watch this recording now or later. My role as governed by the board was to hear, and it was not my role to adjudicate. You folks did that, and I think you folks did it exceedingly well this evening, and I want to be the first of hopefully many to congratulate the board because my effort in going through all of those hearings, and as laborious as it was and as difficult as they are, was to try to bring something back to the board so that you folks could make meaningful decisions. I appreciate where you ended up on my recommendation of a town-wide ban. I think your reaction was appropriate because what I heard you say is we need to have more discussions, and that's one of the things as your administrator that I hope to take from this tonight. But also as the administrator, I just wanted to put out there that I wouldn't want anyone to come away from your hearing this evening thinking that I, Joe Powers, your town administrator, who is a resident, a voter, a taxpayer, and I think most important of all, a dad of two minor-aged children. And I chose to move here with my family more than six years ago. I had the choice of many towns on Cape Cod, and I chose Harwich for a number of reasons, not the least of which was the school system, not the least which was what we know to be the natural beauty, but I just got a good feeling about this town as I visited many times searching for a house. And let the record show that was years before you decided to pay me to be in this town. I don't want to live in a town where people are puking in bushes over a guardrail right down the street from a church. I don't want to raise my daughters in a town where young people are so intoxicated, so inebriated, that they can't figure out where their house is or where they were staying that night or what vehicle they were driving. And so, all of those facts that came before me, and I would just say that in my prior experience, in your role for a larger community, I'm very well-versed in hearing liquor violations, which would be the over-serve, which would be the underage, which would be the altercation. I'm not used to noise, and so when I approach these hearings, to me, I could bifurcate. There are liquor-based allegations that have to do with the operation of a liquor license. And then there's noise, and so I hope we have, as members, as you've all said tonight, that we have ongoing conversations about our noise by law, about our expectations of licensees that can promote outdoor entertainment or outdoor noise, is another way of saying it. And I also hope, I also hope that people appreciate that the standard on the liquor violations is exceedingly high at the ABCC. And I can stop talking about that and defer to council, but I speak from direct experience having appeared before the ABCC as a licensing authority member and fortunately prevailing. If we want to prevail in Harwich, the tremendous burden of an already-burdened police chief and police department is astounding, the level of care that needs to be taken to treat what perhaps the ABCC would consider, in my inelegant, non-attorney words, as a crime scene. Who witnessed the person being poured? Who witnessed the person imbibing what was poured? Who witnessed the person acting intoxicated? And did they testify? So, the levels are tremendously high on the liquor license violations. Now, the good news is, we don't have a lot of those, and I do think we have a fair amount for a town that is a resort, but we have too many for a town that doesn't have a college and the way that people are acting around town. So, I wanted to take this opportunity to just convey to the board that, as I assuredly will serve on hearings going forward, that I remind everybody that comes before me that I have a very simple role. I'm not a judge. I'm not an attorney. I'm not expected to play either of those roles. My job is to have people come before me in a formal setting, but less formal than this and far less formal than the ABCC, to get facts out there so I can make determinations. And last but not least, I want to thank the board because your efforts tonight have given me a wealth of information as to how you operate on matters of this sort going forward, and I feel that I can be an even better hearing officer going forward, unfortunately for the allegations that will come forward, but we have to deal with noise. And I don't want anyone in the town to think that what I provided to the board tonight is because I didn't care about something, and I just wanted to take this opportunity before we adjourn mercifully. I do care. I know the board sees that, but I more, I think more importantly beyond caring, I take the role that you give me as hearing officer very seriously, knowing that it's going to end with you folks as the final authority, as the local licensing authority, and you did that exceedingly well under your requirements of the law.
Thank you, Joe.
Those are my thoughts.
One second. Attorney Blake, do you want to add anything before I get into board members?
No, I don't have any, although, you know, I will say with respect to the outdoor entertainment, I do think that that's a policy decision, and from where I sit and having to come through and sit, or used to sit right where Don is sitting right now during these, during the hearings, you know, that's something that probably needs some focus, a little bit of tinkering for the hearing officer, for the prosecutor, and for the, and for the audience and the establishment.
Thank you. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, we're obviously going to agenda this in the future, but I would like to at least make a pitch here over the parameters here. I think one of the things that we might want to look at is our previous one-size-fits-all attitude with the tethering of the outdoor entertainment for the liquor license to the noise by law. We probably want to first start with the maps for the different districts to see how deep those districts are, whether there's any buffers in any of those commercial districts where pouring is occurring and we're giving liquor licenses. End door, we may want to be much more nuanced in the actual noise by law about what it is we're trying to grab. I do know if you're trying to sleep at 2:00 in the morning, somebody, a bunch of teenagers in the next-door neighbor's yard having a loud argument is no less comforting to you than listening to a P.A. system from a bar, so. I know we got a lot to grapple with, but I would urge us to actually look at this in a little bit more sophisticated way than the number of feet for the whole town.
Send me, each board member, send me your thoughts on that, and then I will agenda it. But send me your thoughts on what you'd like to see, and I would say by February, we will have a meeting and then a public hearing and then another meeting, and this isn't going to be settled in one. Before we go on to the rest of the board members, Chief, do you have anything you'd like to add tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few quick comments. Appreciate all the good work tonight from everybody. This past summer, you know, we had a little bit of a change in how we were going to do things, and that resulted in me authoring 21 memos to the board for this season between May and right now, last month, I believe. I think my last one actually was sometime this month. 21 memos regarding incidents at drinking establishments. And so, you, most of those, a couple of them were proactive from our offices, but most of them were a direct result of calls for service to the police department. And I just want to run down a list. Noise from outside entertainment, noise from inside entertainment, disturbances, unruly crowds in the street at closing time, crowd noise at the establishment, unruly patrons, intoxicated patrons, intoxicated fighting patrons, public urination, intoxicated patron causing damage to property, intoxicated patron found sleeping in someone else's vehicle, intoxicated underage patron found sleeping in someone else's house, underage drinking in the establishment, employees drinking in the establishment after hours, leaving premises with open containers. That's just this season. I agree with Mr. Powers. That's a lot for a small town, don't you think? The police department has made every effort to be responsive to complaints and to investigate and document our findings and then forward those findings to the board. And I appreciate town administrator's comments that this is a high standard. I want to deviate from my words here just for a bit to save face of the police department. There's a lot of findings of insufficient evidence. If my officers came up short in delivering testimony that resulted in that finding, the responsibility is entirely my own, okay? We will continue to work hard. We will continue to train. We will continue to try and understand the very confusing issues that are presented to our officers. I do not have a department of 35 ABCC-certified investigators. I have a department of police officers, human beings, who go out there every night, in the middle of the night and day and evening, and try and do their very best to unravel a mess. So, with that being said, after I forward those findings to the board, if a hearing is deemed necessary, the officers are made available to testify. So far this year alone, the police department has spent over $6,000 in overtime for officers attending show cause hearings for potential liquor regulation violations. This occurs, this $6,000 figure does not include my time, my administrative assistance time, or my operations lieutenant's time. A conservative estimate of the total cost for this, for my department for this year in managing these events is $10,000. This is while my budget, the police department's budget, is being cut, and the department is facing a staffing shortage the likes of which has not been seen. The department is currently down five officers, and that number could potentially grow to eight by next summer, and that's when all this is going to start again. I've watched this situation evolve over the last several years, and I'm convinced that the only thing that will reduce the number of complaints is lengthy suspensions of the liquor license for a confirmed violation and the modification of licenses of repeat offenders to include rolling back of hours of operation, as mentioned on page 17 in the liquor regulations. One last comment. I disagree that the bylaw and the liquor regulation conflict as to noise. I think they overlap, is a better term. It's quite clear within the town's noise bylaw ordinance that any violation, they carve out chapter 138 licensees, so they say if there's a, if there's a difference between what's on the license and what the bylaw says, the license prevails. And it's pretty clear in the liquor regulation, outside entertainment, you know, has to end at 10:00 p.m., and prior to that, anything that's playing the audible beyond 150 feet should be considered a violation. Any outside entertainment after 10:00 p.m. is an absolute violation. Inside entertainment, noise cannot exceed the premises. So, if it's heard on the sidewalk, inside entertainment is a violation, and that's the way we've been trying to roll. So, those are my comments. If you have any questions.
I guess first comment, Chief, is I hope you didn't take, there was no takeaway from this board that you don't have one of the best police departments in the state and beyond. We have a great police department and great police officers.
I appreciate your support.
We've been, and I hope that you see the support from this board, and eight short certainly warrants conversation with the board and the town administrator and how we're going to fix that. You know, I've watched this evolve from no entertainment in Harwich Port to a lot of entertainment in Harwich Port. Some abused it. Some went outside of what they were permitted for. Some have made a mockery of this process, and it's cost the town a lot of money. Your $10,000 to this town, we're probably 10 times that and with nothing in the future. But this board stands strong, and this board is not going to be railroaded by anybody. We've taken the comments, we hear the comments from the public, from other board members, from the town administrator, from yourself, from other business owners that are doing things correctly, and are getting thrown into this. But this is our process now, and I think we have to refine our process because this took an exorbitant amount of time from the town administrator and your officers. I will have on the agenda very soon the hearing process so that the board can vote a policy on the hearing process. There's a lot of policies coming, and I'm not saying that I won't support pulling the entertainment licenses in different districts and roll back hours. I'm not saying that at all. We have to listen to the people. We have to do the right thing, and I think that we're making great steps towards that. A lot of this burden falls on the business owners, whether they want to see it or not. It absolutely falls on the business owners to cooperate with each other and to cooperate with the town. My comments about Josh Winston, he stood right up and said, "Yeah, I did it. Here's how we're going to fix it," and he's working on that. Not everybody's the same, and this town, we, again, the board is standing strong and we're not going to let anyone bulldoze over us, and we're willing to go the distance as far as litigation. We hear you, and we hear the residents, and we're working on it.
Thank you.
Julie?
No, I would reiterate your comments, and I hope you know that, you know, we do. We really respect you and your officers, and you've worked really hard, and you've done it at the board's behest in imploring you to take it seriously, but I do feel that at times we've done a disservice to the department because we have some things to really hammer out and try to figure out where we go from here and to send a unified collective message that, you know, we won't tolerate certain things. I think we need to do that. I think we need to clean up some things so that you can find some relief, frankly, and that you're not having to respond to this amount of calls. It's, and nobody wants to. I agree. I mean, we're a small town. We're not a college town, you know? We don't need this many types of complaints, but we also have to be realistic. Some of these complaints are coming out of left field. We know that, and some of them you're being brought into, we're being brought into. We're all sitting here because some of those things. So, we need to figure out a way to decipher through that and carve through it and figure out how we move forward. So, I hope you know that you have the full support of the board.
Thank you.
Mary?
I agree with Julie. Reading through all of that testimony for those five establishments, it was very clear to me from your officers that they knew what they saw and they knew it was wrong. The challenge was it wouldn't hold up. There wasn't, we didn't have anyone who saw the license. We didn't have who saw them pour. They got off on technicalities tonight, but I am with you 100%, and I assume any discussion we have about these matters, we will include the chief. We absolutely value your opinion.
Thank you.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, reiterate, I want your officers to understand that, too. It's like, whether or not they were overruled because of the possibility of them not being upheld at the ABCC, shouldn't be confused with the fact that we asked for them to do this, they are doing it, and your department's very responsive. We appreciate that. Appreciate your efforts. Appreciate the town administrator's efforts. I've been on this board periodically over the last 21 years. It's amazing that some of the things are different, but they seem to follow in cycles, and we're definitely in a cycle here. And I don't want anybody to believe, on the pouring establishment side, that, I want the takeaway to be that I was saying, well, we got to throttle back and start at the very beginning on a progressive punishment, because if this nonsense, and I'm thinking of a different word, continues, we're going to start meeting out multi-day suspensions to people, because the word has got to get out that overall, this is excessive. I don't really care that we got some peculiarities. I remember, you know, where the port was, was butlers. I remember all the old buildings. It's a Cape Cod tradition. You never give directions using the current name. I remember all these establishments... I remember all these establishments were. I mean, Parks was sword and shield, I mean, it's been carved up. But the problem is, in a lot of purely suburban neighborhoods, like when I played in clubs, there was a building out somewhere, and there's a parking lot in front of it, so the idea of hearing, you know, noise, as you walk towards the club, you heard noise because there was a band playing. I didn't hear it because it was the band. But the problem here is that we've repurposed things. We're in areas where we are, as a community, rural slash suburban, but some of the setup, like in Harwichport, is more like you're going through a small city because everything's lined up, it's pretty compact, they're close together, you got residences right by, you know, pouring establishments. And the only thing that's going to actually work is either they understand together as a group that they have obligations to live within the confines of the community and that they are members of the community, or we're going to have to start, as Jeffrey had said earlier, we, instead of starting at step one or step two, we may go to step five until people start getting the message that it's going to hurt, you're not going to be able, and I wouldn't assume if anybody's got a license that we may not go after the conditions of the entertainment next year on different licenses because our responsibility isn't to treat everybody the same in outcome. Our responsibility is to treat everybody equally as we examine what they're doing. So if their behavior warrants a different conclusion, it's not because we're being disparate, it's because they are doing something to cause us to create a different outcome than what otherwise have occurred. So if people start flouting everything and continue to say it's our problem that we're even having a hearing, I'm sorry, if they're repeat offenders, and that's the attitude, that's going to have a different consequence as we go on, and it merits a different consequence.
Take a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all. Thank you, Jeff.